We're going to start, and I know Supervisor Bennett is here, but let's get underway because I know folks have calendars to keep up with here. So, call to order the Ventura County Air Pollution Control Board, and it is, today is September 11th. Could we have a roll call first, please?
Supervisor Bennett.
He's here.
Supervisor Parks.
Here.
Councilmember Ramirez.
Here.
Councilmember Morgan.
Here.
Supervisor Long.
Here.
Councilmember Sharkey.
Present.
Supervisor Zergosa.
Here.
Supervisor Poy.
Here.
Councilmember Washburn. And Councilmember Brennan.
And Supervisor Bennett.
Yes, got you. Okay, thank you. We do have a quorum. We could stand now for the pledge to the United States in appreciation for our first responders, those who gave their lives, and those who were lost on September 11th, and freedoms we enjoy. Thank you. Hand over heart, ready to begin.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, we have our minutes of our meeting of June 12th and June 26th. And the request is to continue those. Motion to do that?
motion.
Motion, second, to continue the minutes. Any objections? Hearing none, so ordered. We will continue those. Then next, we have our agenda review. Any requests by the members for changes? Any revisions to be noted? Any changes? Okay, so the agenda will stand as presented. Next up, we've got comments from any, from board members? Any comments from board members?
We will be having our, what would you call that, my quartle? Of our, go ahead.
Our Basin Wide Control Council meeting will be next Wednesday on the 19th.
We have those periodically in Santa Barbara. See what everybody's doing. Sometime we'll tell you about the sand blowing and the problem we had last time in Pismo Beach.
Okay. We look forward to hearing that at our next meeting.
Okay.
Any other board comments? I don't see any. All right, our consent item is consent item eight. The action before the board for the consent item? Any questions on the consent item? Is there a motion on the consent item?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion, second. Objection to that? Hearing none, so ordered. Now, we will move, and we appreciate Joan Burns and her willingness to serve as a representative for the city of Thousand Oaks. All right, we're on now to item nine. And good morning, Mr. Piagus.
Good morning. Chair Long, members of the board, I'm Mike Piagus. Okay, here we go. When we embarked on this rule development process, we had four main goals. One was to reduce source testing costs for the regulated community. We also planned to achieve any cost-effective mission reductions that we could achieve, and improve the clarity of the two rules. Lastly, we plan to make sure we complied with the requirement to implement all feasible measures under the California Cleaner Act. My next slide pertains to Rule 7411.1, which is our water heater, large water heater and small boiler rule. The rule used to apply to units up to 2 million BTUs per hour, but the reduced complexity of the rules, we're now going to have it apply to only units up to 1 million BTUs per hour, so there will no longer be any overlap with our Rule 7415.1. We're proposing to lower the NOx emissions to 20 parts per million for the larger units effective January 1st, 2013. These are the units between 400,000 BTUs per hour and 1 million BTU per hour. For the smaller units, between 75,000 BTU per hour, and these are the commercial water heaters, at 400,000 BTUs per hour, the compliance date would be January 1st, 2014. These new limits meet your board's cost-effectiveness thresholds, and a substantial amount of complying equipment is available at this time. I'd like to point out that this is a point-of-sale rule and applies only to new units. The next slide relates to Rule 7415.1, which is our general boiler rule, and it applies to units in the range between 1 million to 5 million BTUs per hour. We're proposing to reduce the source testing frequency for units in the size range of 1 to 2 million BTUs per hour. We're going to have these units perform a much less expensive screening analysis on an annual basis. Source testing would be required every four years instead of the current cycle of every two years. This will result in cost savings for approximately 70 facilities, including small businesses, colleges, school districts, hotels, and hospitals. The new screening results will be reported to the districts, and any excess emissions would have to be reduced in a timely manner. We're also proposing to reduce the NOx limit limits from 20 parts per, down to 20 parts per million from 30 parts per million in the size range of 1 to 2 million BTU per hour units. These limits are cost-effective, and there are plenty complying units available, and they're also consistent with limits in the South Coast regulation. The last slide relates to a comment received from the Air Resources Board. They've requested we lower the NOx limit for units in the size range 2 to 5 million BTUs per hour. District staff performed an extensive analysis and found that there is not adequate complying equipment available at this time. Therefore, we're not proposing to make this change. We will review the status, and we've committed to ARB to do this with our next update to the Air Quality Management Plan, which will just be in a few years as part of my triennial assessment.
You say a few years, how many years? And how, when?
It'll be within three.
Thanks.
I'd also like to point out that the Advisory Committee unanimously recommended these changes to your board, and we have a letter of support, which I provided from Western States Petroleum Association on the rule action.
Okay, so that ends the staff report. Any questions, board members? And we all did receive the letter from the Western State Petroleum Association. We have one speaker card on this, I believe. That's all I have is one. And I would invite up Sandra Burkhardt.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Sandra Burkhardt, and I'm a senior coordinator with the Western States Petroleum Association. WISPA is a nonprofit trade association representing 27 companies that explore, fore, produce, refine, transport, and market petroleum, petroleum products, natural gas, and other energy supplies in California and five other western states. WISPA has participated in the development of these boiler rules through participation in workshops, the advisory committee, and providing staff with written comments. You do have written comments today in your packet, which we submitted at the end of August, so I'm going to keep my comments brief. WISPA supports the proposed revisions to Rule 74.11.1 and Rule 74.15.1. With respect to Rule 74.15.1, for units greater than or equal to 2 million BTU per hour and less than 5 million BTU per hour, we appreciate that staff is proposing the following two items: retaining the current NOx emission limit of 30 ppm, and secondly, limiting compliance requirements for portable emission analyzers to be calibrated, maintained, and operated in accordance with manufacturer recommendations without the imposition of costly protocols and training plans. WISPA and its member companies greatly appreciate the district's response to our concerns on these proposed rule revisions, and we believe that they will ensure compliance as well as assist the county in meeting its air quality goals. And in closing, I just wanted to state that I work with a lot of different agencies in my position with WISPA, and by far, the air pollution district staff is one of the best for me to work with. We don't always get along on everything or agree with everything, but they're very, very easy to work with, always responsive to our needs, so I just wanted to publicly recognize them today for that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments and for the written correspondence also. I don't have any other further, I don't have further speaker cards on this item, so it is now before the board.
Nice of you to take the time to come down. We don't, you know, it's good to hear the positives as well as the other side. I move the recommended action.
Second.
So, motion, a second, on the recommended actions, of which there are five. Any objection to the motion? Hearing seen none, so ordered. That item is now approved by the board. We'll move on to item 10.
Because of the district's positive financial performance over the past several years and the current economic downturn, staff is not proposing to increase fees at this time during the current fiscal year. Instead, we're just proposing some changes that will benefit the administration and collection of permit fees. There are two major changes. First, we're specifying exactly the time in which we're going to choose the hourly rate when we invoice someone for permit processing fees, and what we're going to stay is when the permit application is deemed complete, that date will lock in the hourly rate that's in effect for that invoice. The district's hourly service rates change no more than once per year, and they're based on the cost permit processing by district staff. These hourly rates are approved by your board upon proper legal notification under Health and Safety Code. This rule change is needed to clarify the exact hourly we're going to be charging on our invoices. The second change relates to a situation where we've had what I would call a transitory source, such as a construction company come in, submit a permit application, we work on the permit application, and they do their work and leave, and then they don't pay the processing fees. And what we're proposing is language that is very similar to what is found in South Coast rule that says, "Before you come back again, we're not going to work on any additional applications from your company until you've paid your past fees." And this, it happens very rarely, but it has happened with construction companies. And that's all I have on this change. I'd like to point that we did have a workshop. We only had one attendee from Shenanah. They had no problems with the proposal, and we had a unanimous recommendation from the Advisory Committee.
Very good, thank you. Any questions to staff?
I just have a comment. I think it's really outstanding that we are not looking at new fees, and I think the public should be very happy with that at this stage when everybody else is having to do that. Thank you.
We've been quite frugal with the money we spend at the district, and it looks like we're going to be bringing an unaudited financial status report to your board next meeting in November, and it looks quite good and other net savings. Would caution that there is a lot of pressure in Congress to reduce the federal grant to the air districts, and that could necessitate some changes in the future.
Sure would. Okay, there aren't any questions, and I don't have any speaker request on this, so...
Second.
Motion, a second, approve the recommended actions, of which there are five. Any objection to that? Hearing none, so ordered. And we move on to item 11. Good morning.
Chair Long, members of the board, Stan Cowan, air quality engineer. First, county council indicated that attachment one may be missing from your packet, which is the notice of exemption from CEQA. I've given a copy to the clerk in case that, if that's the case, so it can go in the record. So, I just wanted to just make a little housekeeping item first.
Thank you.
APC is proposing to amend three rules: 7413, which is our aerospace coating rule, 7420, adhesive and sealant rule, and 7424, rain coating rule, to reduce reactive organic compound emissions from solvent cleaning operations in all three rules. The proposed amendments are considered to be all feasible measures under the California Clean Air Act, and recent developments in low ROC technology and the availability of newly exempt solvents enable new cleaners, new ultra-low cleaners, to be formulated at 25 grams per liter, which is the proposal for all three rules. These new cleaners have been successfully used for several years in the South Coast since 2005 in our own district rules, including our metal parts rule, automobile refinishing, graphic arts, and wood coating rules. Thus, this rule action will extend existing rule requirements to other rules that lack this effective control measure. The one exception to this proposal is for 7413 aerospace rule, we're working closely with the U.S. Navy, and they tested this one product, which did not work as well as thought, and so we've proposed an alternative, which is a lower vapor pressure limit instead of the ultra-low ROC cleaner. And this means a drop in vapor pressure from 45 down to 5 millimeters of mercury. What this means is lower vapor pressure means lower evaporation, which means fewer emissions. The proposal affects approximately 17 coating and adhesive spray sources that are currently permitted by the district. ROC reductions amount to about nine tons per year ROC, and the cost effectiveness, which is very good, ranges from a cost savings to 18 cents per pound of ROC reduced. This is much cheaper than what new sources can expect, upwards of $9 per pound. So, it's a very cost-effective measure. Federal and state cleaner act require that we adopt reasonable and feasible control measures to meet our air quality goals. We did hold a public consultation meeting December 1st, and a rule workshop was held in February this year. The Advisory Committee recommended unanimous approval on July 24th. We've also saw comments, which we usually do from industry associations, including the American Coatings Association, Adhesive and Sealants Council, and the Single Ply Roofing Institute. We received no comments from them, but we'd like to include national organizations to let them know what we're doing so that we can make sure that what we're doing makes sense to them. Also, EPA and ARB reviewed these rule amendments, and they had some changes, but none more significant. And so, if your board should adopt this proposal, there are also findings, and the exemption notice also must be adopted as well. I'd happy to answer any questions.
Okay, questions? Staff? No, not hearing any. And any public request cards? Okay, then it's back before the board.
Move the approval of, I have no questions, I'm sorry. Any question?
No.
Move the approval of the item.
Motion, a second, to adopt the recommended actions, of which there are five.
Hearing none. Objections to that motion? So ordered. Thank you for the report, Stan. Appreciate it. We'll move right on to item 12, approval of the 38 grant funding requests for new projects under Carl Moyer.
Yes, the Carl Moyer program provides incentives for businesses to replace older diesel equipment with lower emission equipment. This is the 14th year of the program, and we've received 64 applications to replace 128 tractors and repower seven commercial fishing vessels. We evaluated each piece of equipment and ranked the cost and benefits compared to the other project, to all other project applications, and determined which were most cost-effective. Today, we're recommending funding of just over $3 million for the 75 most cost-effective pieces of equipment. This would include the replacement of 74 tractors with 73 new lower emission tractors and the repower of one commercial fishing boat with two new low emission engines. The total annual projected emission reductions are 46 tons per year of ozone precursor, that would be nitrogen offside and reactive organic compounds, 2 tons of toxic diesel particulate, and 292 metric tons of carbon dioxide of greenhouse gas. That concludes my remarks.
Questions of staff? This is quite the list. Yes?
Another outstanding program. Can I just ask the details of the grant? The grant is given to the different growers, farmers here, and are, what are, are there any strings attached at all?
Yes, they do have reports they turn in that they are actually utilizing the equipment on an annual basis. They also have, there is some cost share, meaning they don't get the entire cost of, we pay up to about 80 percent of a piece of equipment, so there is cost share on their part also.
Is there an approved list of new vehicles that they can buy, or can they choose, or they have only one, and...
Well, the equipment needs to meet the most recent EPA certifications for these diesel equipment.
And it just, slightly delicate question, are these American-produced vehicles? Do we know?
They're both Japanese and American. They're from all over the world.
From all over the world. Well, we live in a global economy, so I understand. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions on this item?
Looks good.
Yeah, I think it's quite, this is a wonderful program that we have. Are there, are there any public cards? No? Yes? Okay.
I do have one question.
Okay.
All the farmers get notified of this, is that correct, Mike, around the county?
Yes, they do. And we do, we work with the equipment suppliers, which is really the way to reach them because they're the ones that do, they, you know, they have a vested interest in selling tractors, so they really do the outreach to the agricultural community.
I was just curious, because I saw a couple I didn't see on here, and I was wondering why they didn't apply. Okay, thanks.
That's correct. It needs to qualify, it needs to be eligible for the project, and I'm going to talk about it in a further item, and the reason you might not have seen it is we've already done 293 tractors under this program, so we may have got to them in a previous year.
Maybe.
Okay, pleasure to the board.
We have a motion, and we have a second.
Any objection? Hearing none, so ordered. It's a great list, good work, really is a good program. Thank you so much. All right, that is approved. Item 13.
Chair Long, members of the board, Stan Cowan, air quality engineer. A year ago, your board voted to apply for $200,000 grant from the California Energy Commission to install public, sorry, to install plug-in electric vehicle charging stations, or, I'm sorry, to do planning for that, for that work, along the Central Coast, which includes Santa Barbara County, Ventura County, and San Luis Obispo Counties. This funding was a result of Assembly Bill 118, that was adopted in 2007, created the Alternative Renewable Fuel and Vehicle Technology Program. This past January, we did hear from the Energy Commission, and we received this award for $200,000 for the PEV readiness planning in the Tri-County region. Southern California Edison has forecasted that the Central Coast will be a strong PEV adopter market, and the region will benefit from increased planning efforts. The Central Coast has a key transportation corridor, Highway 101, between northern and southern California. We're working closely with the three counties, Santa Barbara County, San Luis Obispo County, APCDs, Community Environmental Council, and the clean cities of the Central Coast. Part of the requirements of the grant is to create what's called a Central Coast Coordinating Council. This is basically a group of individuals who are interested in promoting electric vehicle charging station infrastructure. And we had our first meeting just past May. We were basically reviewing the draft plan, which has already started, under the federal DOE grant, which was a $50,000 grant, which was administered by San Luis Obispo APCD. Already, we have 42 public Level 2 charging stations in the county. Level 2 is a 240 volt charging station. You can charge an electric car, typically a leaf, for example, in about seven hours to get full charge with a Level 2 station. There are already 42 of these public stations. We don't have any of the Level 3 stations yet. That's the fast charging, where you can get, you can charge electric vehicle in 30 minutes, up to 80 percent charge. So, we're working on getting those charging stations developed. Remember, this $200,000 grant was strictly for EV readiness planning. Another big, important aspect of this is to get the cities EV-friendly, and that means trying to expedite the permitting process for this equipment, adopting ordinances for parking and for new construction possibly, where they include wiring already, you know, it's not easier to do it while the construction's new, rather than do it in a retrofit basis. So, that's kind of another big goal of this granting effort. Today's request is approval for two subcontracts. One is for $100,000 to EV Communities Alliance, and the other one is for $50,000 to Community Environmental Council to act as an EV liaison. The $100,000 is for the development of the planning effort, EV readiness plan. These grant awards are based on a competitive bid process. The RFP was issued back in February. This was done to promote open competition under county and state guidelines. We are proposing to retain $50,000 for in-house work out of this $200,000 grant. This funding is available because of an overlap between the planning effort being done by SCAG, the Southern California Association of Governments, which has a similar grant that we have in the Central Coast, and they're doing Ventura County planning as well as we are. So, that freed up this money, $2,000, for us to use for other purposes, for implementation, for training, for outreach, that sort of thing. The SCAG has awarded subcontract to UCLA to do some EV readiness plans for Ventura County, and we are modifying the budget with the Energy Commission to include this change. Happy to answer any questions you have about our program.
Any questions? Yes.
I was wondering about the steering committee. How is that selected?
The steering committee is basically the three air districts, the clean cities of Central Coast, and then environmental, the Community Environmental Council of Santa Barbara. How is that, they were just basically voluntary.
Well, as they go around and get, start getting input and workshops with the public, I hope you'll look to us also as helping you to get a good showing from the public, to get the air input.
Yeah, this, we're just a basically advisory group. That's kind of how we function.
Thank you.
So, if we, excuse me, Ms. Chairman, so if we have... So if we, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, so if we have someone that's very interested, and it's a great spot near the freeway, that wants to come in and do that on their property, we can refer that to you?
Yeah, definitely. Another important aspect of this program is the charging stations have the ability to collect revenue. You can charge either for parking or for the power, so that defers some of the cost, because that might be a concern for, especially for government agencies that are worried about, you know, giving away funds to the public or whatever. You can charge for this charging.
Other questions? Yes.
You said there's 40 locations in the county now?
Yeah, 42.
And how are they being used? I mean, are they used, because I've seen a lot of them where they're sitting, you can't usually park there because it's for electric cars, so what's, do we have most of them being used?
Yeah, there is quite a good usage of these, especially the city of Ventura downtown. They had, they put in 10 stations alone at the two parking garages. And you always see cars parked there.
Okay, so that's worked out pretty well there. It's usually where somebody's going, and they're spending the whole day at work, and they're coming. The places where you just see them kind of in regular parking, that's a little bit tougher for somebody to use, right? Because I may go into the store for an hour or something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I guess how they do it is probably important, like parking structures and things probably more applicable. Yeah, okay.
I'll go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. C E C, I know it's going great guns in Santa Barbara, it's a fine organization, but my past dealings with them, they sort of think of the city of Ventura as the frontier. Are they prepared to operate in Ventura County, do you think?
In fact, they already are. I don't know if you attended the July 4th Clean Car Show event? That was organized by that same group.
All right, so yeah, I just want to be sure that, you know, they are Santa Barbara-focused, but, you know, we're sitting here in Ventura County, so I want to make sure they're on board here.
Right.
I do have speaker cards on this also, but go ahead, Mr. Mark.
This is one that would be, you'd want to look and see if it's being used. You have, how many power, how many stations do you have at the factory outlet mall in Camarillo?
There's, I believe there's two there.
Just two?
Yeah, two chargers, yeah.
How well are they being used?
Well, those haven't been retrofitted yet. We're waiting for the outlet mall to, they have some sort of corporate policy that they're working on, and once that's figured out, then they're going to go ahead and retrofit those stations, because those still have some of the old charging equipment from 10 years ago.
Well, you're also going to have to put some sort of signage up to say that they're there, because you don't even know what's there.
Yeah, they're outside of the food court there.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So you need to, we need to do that kind of thing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, no further questions? All right, I'd invite up Mike Stubblefield. Public comment on this item? Go ahead.
Chairwoman Long, members of the Air Pollution Control Board, my name is Mike Stubblefield. I'm here today on behalf of the Sierra Club, of which I'm a longtime member, the former chair. I'm also the air quality chair for Ventura County, although our chapter goes into Santa Barbara, as some of you probably know as well. This year, the Sierra Club actually co-sponsored the National Plug-In Day on September 23rd. We co-sponsored that along with Plug-In America. So many Sierra Clubbers nationwide, like myself, are getting, becoming interested in electric vehicles and plug-in vehicles. And I have a special interest myself. I'm the recently retired senior technical author of Haynes Publishing, so I've devoted my professional life to writing automotive and motorcycle repair manuals for a long time, and although they were all devoted to internal combustion engines, now that I'm a retiree, I'm looking forward to building some of my own electric vehicles. I also recently joined an organization called Plug-In Ventura County, which is part of this collaborative that all of you probably know about, that's going to build the, design and build the infrastructure up and down the 101 corridor, so that electric vehicles will become viable to get from here up to the Bay Area. Because until and if we have a viable charging infrastructure, you won't be able to get that far with an electric vehicle. So I think this is probably going to be the first time we're going to talk, but I'll be back many, many more times as this unfolds. Today, I'm specifically here just to simply ask you to, first of all, commend you on, and the APCD for already budgeting that $25,000 in this year's budget for another charging station. And I want to endorse this $50,000 set aside that Stan brought up by not duplicating efforts with South, with the people down south and wasting the taxpayers' money. So that's $50,000 that can be put to better uses here locally for planning outreach and other stuff related to electric vehicles, although I understand from Stan, it cannot actually be used for building another station. So I just, I want to make you aware that we exist. Some of my colleagues are also here today, so I'll let them talk more about our local collaborative, but we're going to be advocating on behalf of electric vehicle and hybrid owners and enthusiasts who build their own vehicles, and for the infrastructure that it's going to take to make this whole program viable. Thank you very much.
Could I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
With the group that you're working on, you know, because we represent Ventura County, it seems important to me that we make sure that we provide for Ventura County residents the ability to get from one end of the county to the other, though I know a lot of our emphasis is also, you know, outside the counties and connecting that way. But I wonder if there are some goals towards that end, and maybe Mike can talk about it too, about how to make sure that we can help the residents of our county at least to move within the county.
I'm not sure I understand.
For example, some of these cars need to be charged pretty, you know, they can only go a limited amount of miles. And that could mean someone in Thousand Oaks can't even get to Ojai, you know, unless we have some kind of charging stations available. So I'm just saying, if there are goals out there that first look at how we can address the people in our county so that they can get within our county before we start looking at outside-the-county connections.
Good point. Well, one of the things that Plug-In Ventura County is going to be doing is advocating for just such an infrastructure, and the location is critical, as you point out, because some vehicles have a limited range, so people need to be able to get from A to B. So we are looking at that, and with the advent of these new fast charging stations, which are going to require a lot of watts, voltage, current, so you can't just put those anywhere right now. They'll probably have to go in industrial, light industrial areas where that kind of power's available. But with those, as Stan pointed out, you'll be able to charge your electric car 80% in half an hour, which is not quite as quick as a gas station, but it's a lot closer.
Yeah, and you want to make sure you have the amenities that are convenient to the commuters, so that while they're waiting a half hour, they can be dining or whatever.
Exactly. And the Stage 2 ones, the 240 volt ones will work fine for that, because if you go to the Camarillo Premium Outlet, you go to the Edwards Theater complex there, if there's one at the Point of Ventura Mall, all the big shopping centers, Thousand Oaks, then people will be able to just leave their car there while they go shopping, or go eat, or watch a movie. So, yeah.
Thank you.
We're in the nascent stages of this, you know, I mean, there are a lot of them out there, but what we hope to do is to advocate for a really rational, meaningful, useful location of all these stations, so that, so that it will happen.
Okay. Appreciate it.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Look forward to the progress of it. Kent Bullard?
My name is Kent Bullard. I'm a resident of the city of Ventura. I'm a sustainability advocate, and I'm also the owner, my wife is the primary driver of our Leaf, which in the past year, we've put 10,000 miles on here in the county community, she primarily goes up to Amgen from Ventura. So I have an experience as an E V driver of what I feel we need to have. And really, we need to look at the customer base of the people who live in the community and are using the E Vs to drive to where they're going. So we need to look at workplace charging. We also need to look at charging that brings people to the county, brings revenue to the county. So what the city of Ventura did by having E V chargers downtown, we're bringing people in to get the convenience-type charging. By getting the new chargers installed at the Premium Outlet Mall, bring people to the malls to get convenience charging. So when I'm driving around, I don't necessarily need to get charged in the city of Ventura. It doesn't really do me any good, especially if I have to pay for it, because I charge at home, and I'm actually charging off my solar system, so I'm not even paying anything if you look at it that way. But when I go outside of the range, when I need to be able to go further and come home, that's when I need to find charging stations and convenience charging. So if I go to Westlake Village, and I spend an hour or two there, and I can plug in, the Level 2 charger will return about 10 miles of range for every hour that I'm plugged in. So having a Level 2 chargers in distributed locations will allow people to travel and go out to places. I can go to Rancho Sierra Vista at the Santa Monica Mountains National Recreation Area, and they have a new Level 2 charger at the Setwaw parking lot. So then you can go there, park, and go hiking, see if people can access areas. So putting chargers in at public locations that are distributed, not concentrating a whole bunch in one location, that's one sort of fallacy of the number of chargers, particularly in the downtown Ventura. We needed to have a few more, maybe on the other side of town, too, to get people to share their wealth kind of thing. But I'm really, it's important, because last year, when the chargers first started coming out, some of the grant programs, it was very important to have Stan come forward and to start coordinating efforts. So we weren't sort of duplicating what was happening, weren't a whole bunch of people going and talking to Linda at the Premium Outlet Mall about what they're doing with their chargers. Getting the coordinated effort, getting the planning documents, so we know what's going on. And also, it's important to keep some localization in this planning effort. The $100,000 is going to a E V planning professional. The C E C money is going to someone who's got some localization, and also keeping money within the county is important, because we need to have input. Because as an E V driver, it's important to have the government tell me what I need to do, but it's also important, as an E V driver, to have input on what our needs are. So again, looking at the customers, bringing people to the county, putting fast chargers or Level 2 chargers in areas that will bring revenue to locations, getting things into the city of Port Juaniemi, bringing people down to the beaches, getting people to the malls, getting people to theaters, getting people to metro link transportation sections, where people can bring their E V down from Ojai, come into Ventura, plug their car in, get on the train and travel, and get off the roads, get out of the internal combustion engines. So it's an important thing, it's a doable thing, and I think it's very important that we continue the effort and continue seeking more funding to get more chargers and more infrastructure, and education to get more people out of their internal combustion vehicle.
Okay, thank you. I can tell you're passionate. Appreciate the input. All right, Russell Snyder. Russell, I may have pronounced that last name wrong there.
They were good enough to name the city of Sydney after my family.
Sydney, thank you.
That is a joke.
That's okay.
I'm with, I'm with the Sustainable Transport Club also. I am CEO of New Energy Answers. I'm a Volt driver. I have been driving electric vehicles for 10 years, and have been an E V advocate for that whole time. I'm here to support the work that Stan is doing, and the staff is engaging in terms of moving everything forward in the world of getting electric vehicles on the road. I appreciate being able to talk to people that are concerned about the emissions issues that are before us, because we're talking about zero emission vehicles here. And not only that, but these are vehicles that actually work now. There's a tendency to talk about electric vehicles as if they are something in the future. They're not, they're something now. They work now, they are very effective now. I have put over 10,000 miles on my Volt since I purchased it in December, and it is my personal solution to creating oil independence in addition to zero emissions. Unfortunately, we only have about 300 vehicles in Ventura County that are electric vehicles. The reason for that is that we need to help people really understand how awesome these vehicles are, and how well they do actually fit into people's lifestyles now. You've heard from Kent about how the Leaf works for him and his family, and it works, my Volt works really effectively for me. The concern is that we need leadership, we need commitment, and we need budget to get the information out there so that we can get these electric vehicles, these zero emission vehicles, on the road. When I first got my Volt, the first 400 miles that I drove, once I got it home, I used three gallons of gas. That not only puts me on the list of people that are no longer responsible for importing oil, but it meant that my emissions dropped radically. What it took for me in terms of infrastructure to be able to do that was to find one of these. Okay? I found one of these in my garage, I got the condo association to go along with letting me use it, and I was off and running. The condo association figured out that I was going to use more electricity than they anticipated, so I had to add something to that. I had to add this. They cost about $50. That allows me to pay the condo association and solve multifamily charging issues. This is how hard it is. People think it is much harder than it is to drive an E V. This is how easy it is. We need to not only get this so that every multifamily dwelling area in the county understands that this solution is available to put zero emission vehicles on the road, and we need to get that infrastructure in place at that level in terms of the multifamily. Currently, I've been tracking my use on my vehicle, and I'm seeing how well I can do with three gallons of gasoline. Currently, I am at 1,500 miles, and I have not yet used three gallons of gasoline. You can imagine how few emissions I'm getting for that amount of travel. What it took for me to get there was for me to drive smarter, and to be able to take advantage of the Level 2 chargers. And I'm one of the users of the local chargers in the area, and I encourage and support that level of activity. I'm also an advocate for workplace charging. This is how hard it is to get the employees of all the agencies that you represent into an electric vehicle. With one of these at home, and one of these in the workforce, there are literally hundreds of thousands of people that can use E Vs in this county to drive over 100 miles a day every day of the week. This is all we need. Okay? So I would encourage everybody to realize that this is an option that is in place now, that workplace charging is one of the ways to help create that, multifamily charging is a way to create that. Your commitment and leadership and creating of the, a budget that would allow us to get this realized would be greatly appreciated. One of the things that it takes is adjusting our mindset. Our mindset says that we have to be able to drive vehicles the way that we do our fossil fuel burning vehicles. The reality is that we can put hundreds of thousands of E Vs on the road in substitution for the fossil fuel burning vehicles, and yes, we will still need them for a while to come, so that we can go from here to San Francisco, from here to Las Vegas, wherever we need to go. The reality is that the other half of the vehicles in the county can be E Vs that are not only zero emissions, not only free from imported oil, but they are just a blast and wonderful to drive.
Thank you, sir, for your comments.
Excuse me, could you just very briefly tell, you held up the workplace charger. What's different about a workplace charger than just a regular plug-in?
This, the workplace chargers need to be outside in the parking lots, so they need to have the G F I, they need to have the weatherproof.
Got it.
Container and the cover.
But otherwise, they're just regular one-ten.
Yeah. I put this together for $40. That's how much it takes to get one of your employees using electric vehicles.
Good visuals, Mike.
Did, I understand you live in Ojai?
I actually live in Santa Paula.
Santa Paula?
But I work with people in Ojai and spend some time up there.
How is that, how is the mileage affected? Just curiosity, because I'm always curious about this one. How far, I mean, how much does it lessen your mileage by going in the hills?
Interestingly, I get my best mileage driving to Ojai and back.
You do?
Yeah. When I leave Ojai, my vehicles, I charge up there for free, which is, I encourage free chargers. And Ojai is smart enough to know that I'm going up there more often to get 70 cents worth of electricity, and I'm spending $50 to $100 in their community whilst I'm getting that free, free charge. But, so I leave there with about 38 miles. By the time I get home, 17 miles later, my vehicle tells me I can go another 33 miles. So the regenerative braking on these advanced technology vehicles allows us to use the hills very effectively.
But they have other cars that have got, get more mileage now, electric vehicles, size of Volt, you have, do they not?
Well, I have the Volt, which gets 35 to 45 mile range, all-electric.
Right.
And that's what I've been driving on for the last 1,500-plus miles. The 2.8 gallons of gas I've used on that are the times that I drove to Diamond Bar and back, okay? I used about two gallons for that. And then when I drove to Santa Barbara from Santa Paula, I used three cents of a gallon of gas to get home, and so I'm using gas a little bit on that level. Kent's Leaf, he can get 80 to 100 and even. Kent's Leaf, he can get 80 to 100 and even more miles on a charge, so he can drive to Ojai and back without even having to think about it, or as you said, to Westlake, so not a problem.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
My pleasure, thank you.
I appreciate your comments. Thank you, and we have one more speaker on this, Peter Miller.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Peter Miller. I have a few businesses in the city of Ventura, and I'm probably in the front line of electric vehicles. We provide low-speed vehicles. And talking to the agenda item, I approve of it. I agree, we should be doing some more research and studying, but I got to ask, what is the mission statement of Air Quality Control Board? It's probably to reduce particulates in the air. When we're talking these highway vehicles driving up and down the road and needing their plug-in infrastructure, I think we'd be much better served to actually have low-speed vehicles driving around towns where emissions are causing the problem. I've got two children with asthma, so I know what it's about, and really, that's what we've got to cut down on. So, our company makes a couple of vehicles that are perfect for campuses, for police departments downtown, and I've just actually had an inquiry from the Ventura Police to actually have electric bikes, so I'm putting a bid together for them. But I was just basically here at the request of some of the other EV people to say my bid. There's a heavy infrastructure cost involved with this plug-in technology. I want people to stop and think about it, because putting in 480 volt, you know, 200 amp kind of heavy-duty service is going to cost a lot of money. Then, if you have an overreaction and people go and buy these things, and you're still waiting two, four hours in the parking lot waiting for somebody else to get out, yeah, they're going to be spending a lot of money buying coffee and waiting for the spot. So, consider these kind of items, but I really want to push my agenda and make money. You know, I want to sort of sell my electric vehicles and my electric bikes and make the people in the cities of Ventura County aware of what we do. We have some vehicles that are available for some rebates from the Clean California Vehicle, so there's money available there, but I just want to put it to the board of consider my business, give me a call, talk to me if you need any advice. Been doing electric vehicles since 1996, so we've got the experience. We know the costs involved. It's still a bit of a rich person's game. I'd like to see it a little bit more available to everybody, so I'm just having a brief word there. So, Peter Miller at Coast Cart and Dogleg Electric Bikes, you'll find them in Ventura.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments, and I'm sure.
What's the name of your company again?
Coast Cart is the electric vehicle company.
Where, where, where?
On Thompson.
Do the talks.
Yeah, it used to be on Ventura Avenue.
Now you're on Thompson.
Now, I guess, yeah.
Okay, appreciate your comments, sir. Thank you. Thank you all for coming in to comment on this. So, that concludes the comment cards submitted. Again, this is item 13, and it has three recommended actions. Back to the board.
Sure.
We've got a motion and a second to that item. Any objections to that? Okay, I don't hear or see any, so that is approved, and thank you for your comments and for coming in.
Madam Chairman, I also like to thank him for his honesty about, right now, it's a money man's game, and I'd like to get those more affordable. I appreciate those comments.
We all would. Okay, item 14, receiving and filing action on summary of grants.
What's receiving and filing?
It's a motion and a second, receiving and filing. Any objection? Hearing none, seeing none, so ordered. Item 15, receiving and filing update report on Protect California Air Act of 2003.
I would give a second.
Motion and a second. Any objection to that? Okay, hearing none, then it is received and filed and part of the public record, so we thank you. Item 16, receiving and filing application for Section 105 grant.
Second.
Motion and a second on that item. Any objection? Hearing, seeing none, so ordered. Item 17, receiving and filing again on Section 103 grant.
Second.
Motion and a second on that. Any objections? Hearing none, seeing none, so ordered. Item 18, approval of cancellation of the October 9th meeting. That's always a quick one.
Madam Chairman, I do realize one thing. When you represent the board at some function or some official meeting, we're supposed to give back, according to state, a report on those meetings. And I will, now we're not doing it in October, I will do it, I guess, in November, whenever we have next.
Nice job.
Pardon me? I can give you a report on both the last one and this one.
Okay. Oh, good.
Because, oh, it's interesting.
Oh, it is. It is. Okay, so the item, again, back to us on item 18. There's a motion and a second. Did I hear that? Is there any objection to that?
No.
Okay, hearing none, so ordered. At this time, we do have public comment on item 19. Is there anyone in the public wishing to speak to the board? I think we had all of that under our items. I don't see any comment cards submitted, so no further public comment, and that stands adjourned, the meeting of the Air Pollution Control Board. Thank you, staff, all the work that goes into preparing this. We appreciate it.
Sure.
And thank you, and we'll see you then in November, but we may talk to you before then.
Five minutes before we start the meeting.
Yes.
We want the chairman.
We're going to start, go back to the Board of Supervisors meeting in about five minutes.